Okay, we're gonna move on and then come back. So, on to new business. Oh, do we have to do anything? We don't have to do anything with Shimmel Hill, correct?
No, it's completed. Close up window.
Same with the 714?
Yeah.
The one 2415, Robert Swenson Jr., Karen E. Swenson, 130 and a half, Somerset Road, or the app. Does this go up to a microphone? Can you introduce yourself for the tape and tell us what you wanted to, please?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Bob Swenson, 130 Somerset Road, well, 130 and a half Somerset Road. The existing house is approximately nineteen years old and the back step needs to be replaced. Originally, when the house was built, we were RC2 zoning and then approximately two years ago, it was changed to R10. And we did not realize that. We submitted an application to put a new step in a small deck on the back of the house, which wasn't approved. So then we met with Eleanor earlier in the summer and she suggested that we file the permit for special application, which we did. So we're asking for permission to be able to replace the existing step and put a new deck in. Is that sufficient explanation?
I think so.
Thank you.
We'll say that, um, does anyone on the board?
So the deck already exists.
No, the step, the step already exists.
Okay, I see.
And part of what we wanted to do as an improvement is that the way the house is faced, all the nor'east storms come in from that direction, so we want to put some kind of a shed roof over the...
Oh, I got it.
Because the wind, when it blows, it comes in onto the wooden floor there in the house and...
So presently, it is...
I see, it's the east elevation. You're putting a, the door exists, but you want to add the roof and you want to connect all this, the outdoor shower, all on a deck?
Yes, not presently. You walk out onto the, onto the grass and it gets muddy, so we thought it would be nice to keep it on the deck and walk straight out.
And then the only question, one other question that I would have is the step. It looks like the deck is five feet away from that corner, but is the step shown on the site plan? I didn't see it, but maybe it is.
I believe it is, yes.
It doesn't show on the survey plan.
No.
So...
In other words, I think what Lisa's trying to say is, will there be a step off the deck that will further approach because that would be a problem?
No, we were gonna, no, we were told by Eleanor that the, that the furthest point of the step would be within the five feet, must be within the five feet. So that is our plan, that the step would be, would not go past the five foot.
Okay.
Or zoning requirement.
Your architectural plans show a step to grade, so...
Okay.
So that should be, would need to be removed or the deck needs to be brought in so that you're not closer than five feet to the property line.
The end of the step?
Yeah.
The end of the step, yes, okay.
Were you using a surveyor to locate this deck prior to construction?
Yes, that was, that was the plan to ensure that's not going to be a problem down the road if we ever sell the house or anything like that, yes.
Okay, so it would be a problem if, if, um, if he didn't use a surveyor and he had to come back here?
Yeah, actually, I'm meeting with Frank Holgate today, two o'clock.
Yeah, because he should have a copy of the decision, assuming you get approved, and so should your builder.
Okay.
And you should make them read it.
And that probably should be attached to the building permit as well, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might not be a bad idea to give yourself a little bit of wiggle room and not be right at the five zero in that corner.
Sure, what would you suggest? Like six inches maybe or something or?
That would be refreshing, yeah.
At least two.
Six would be good because then you're not going to be back here.
Right, yeah, no, I don't want to come, I don't want to come back. I have no problem with doing, I have no problem shortening it up, you know, whatever you feel is appropriate, anything will be better than, than the step we currently have.
All I'm saying is that I don't care what you do, as long as you don't have to come back and it's not less than five feet.
Oh, no, no, definitely.
So if you can make it, you know, five foot one, I'm happy with that. I don't think it has to be six inches. It just has to be done accurately so that you don't have a problem.
No, it's not an issue because the step now is functionable, it's just that it's a little short and when you try to go in and out of the house with groceries or suitcase, it's not that desirable, so that's why we were trying to make it a little bit larger.
Yeah, so you could go six feet as opposed to six three.
Well, the six three probably used to the five foot mark.
Yeah, that's, I think it'll be too close.
So the step is the issue.
If he needs the step.
You need to take into account the step.
If you, if you need it, yeah.
So my understanding is it's the, it would be, so there's two steps there because of the height of the foundation, so...
Right.
So from the bottom step, we want to keep back at least six inches from the five foot mark.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna say all it has to be is more than five feet away from that corner line, however you do it.
But that's all right, I don't, I don't mind leaving a little buffer if that's what the board suggests, that's not an issue.
But you want to make sure your surveyor gives you, gives you, uh, the, the flags at the, at the end of the step, not at the end of the deck.
Correct, yep. I understand, Eleanor was very clear on that, even the, the nosing that protrudes out, it needs, that's countered as well on the step. I will make sure that that's not the case.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, thank you.
So you have a building going to do other work there now, the front porch?
Correct.
Rear roof and the inside. You just want to get this thing blocked?
Correct. Because we were hoping to do them at the same time and then we ran into the zoning change, which we should have been aware of, but we weren't.
Is there anybody in the audience wants to talk about this one? All right.
I'll make a motion to grant the release as requested with, um, just ensuring that nothing is closer than five feet to that rear step back line, including the step.
Okay. Yes? Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, most of them have elected any further discussion, no, that's, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so, does anybody here for Rugged Scott? Yes, okay. Uh, so we'll go back to Rugged Scott.
He's just here.
Who's here?
Josh.
I see him. Fifty-one dash oh-three, Rugged Scott LLC, release of nine lots from the covenant, or the app.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, I got stuck a little bit in our notorious summer traffic.
Don't worry, Judge, will you identify or something? Tape, I know.
Yes, my name's Josh Posner and I'm here about Beach Plum Village, Rugged Scott LLC. The request is to increase the number of lots that are released so that we can continue with our sales program and, um, I think that it makes sense to do that, um, because the, the whole idea of the, of the lot release effort is to make sure that we're staying current with our infrastructure work and the common facilities for the project. At this point, everything is completed in terms of roadways, utilities, amenities, swimming pool, tennis court, clubhouse. There are a few areas where some sidewalks have not been finished, in areas where homes haven't been built yet and where some of the secondary shell streets haven't been built yet in the same vicinity, and so we plan to build those out as we, as we do the rest of the homes. We're leaving many lots still in the restricted category for the zoning board, so there's still, I think, quite a bit of, um, control that you would maintain there. I guess I could say a few words, if you're interested, about the history of this. We, the, the project was permitted in two thousand and six, I believe, or two thousand and seven. Work began, we built ten homes, um, and then with the recession, we had to suspend further construction. We started back up again the winter before last and built two more homes and then we built two homes last winter. So at this point in time, in the forty unit development, fourteen homes are constructed and, um, you know, we're, we're out there, and it's, fourteen homes are constructed, twelve are sold and occupied. Three of those are affordable homes and have been occupied for a number of years. We have a desire to build at least four more homes in the coming winter season, one of which will be unaffordable. I know there was a question that Eleanor raised that you guys were interested in about making sure that we stay on track with the affordable, um, program and there is a covenant that says for every three market rate homes, we need to build an affordable home, and so we're on track with that. We were ahead of, we were ahead of schedule for a while and we will be staying on track with that and recognize that and don't expect to get certificates of occupancy for any market rate homes that would put us out of whack with that, with that formula. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So, questions from the board?
What percentage approximately of the improvements would you say are already
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five?
All, all the curbs are in, the finish coat of the, of the roadway is in. It's, it's literally just a couple of locations where there's some brick sidewalks that are not in and these secondary roadways. All of the, every lot has utilities stubbed to, to it.
So if you're successful here today, you will have approximately twenty-eight lots that have been released?
Yes, I think that's right. I think there's twelve that would still not be released. We have tried to, um, keep the development going in chunks so that we're not spread out all over the whole ten acres, and so we're now at the point where in the first half of it, almost all is completed. There are three lots in the first section that have not been built. We expect to build one of them this winter, um, and so it's time to kind of move into the next zone. We have one of them under agreement and so we need to get the release so that we can honor our commitment to get that built for this, for the new buyer, and so that's in this, in that next section.
Thank you. Okay, Eleanor, I assume you're the one who will highlight the comprehensive part?
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. One, is the homeowner association issue, is there concern there?
No, 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 it's just that they're, they're responsible for the maintenance and certain aspects of it.
Is there a homeowner association in place?
There is. The developer, we are responsible for carrying out the duties of the homeowner association until the project is completed. But we have informal, you know, meetings with the owners every year and that's the process under the, under the agreement.
And the roads, et cetera, are all being kept in a high state of maintenance and plumbing?
We have been out there with the Feshi to inspect for other reasons over the course of time, including the thirty-first of July, and the roads do look like, they are being inspected.
I want to have a look. I thought it was written that we need to look at.
Okay. And the affordable unit distributions question seems to be answered. You're, you're, what do you have to do in, in the math work?
Yeah. The math works and it, you know, it's, it's important, it's, it's a challenging project in terms of some of the units are market rate and some of them are affordable and many of the market rate buyers ask about the affordable program and so we explain it to them, but it's important to do it prorata for kind of all sides.
What's the current price point for affordable?
Um, it's, uh, just under two hundred thousand dollars. And that's for someone who earns eighty percent of the area meeting, median, depending on their family size. So a family of four would be seventy-nine thousand, I think, is the current number.
That's for three bedrooms?
Uh, there are three and four bedrooms. The plant, the plan, actually, you, you raise an interesting question. The, um, the next lot that has an affordable home that we want to build this winter actually has in its program, as it's currently defined, a three-bedroom home on it, and we are going to seek, I think it may be more than you are going to want to do in one session here, but we're going to want to switch to a four-bedroom for that, um, lot if we can. Reason for that is there was a lottery system years ago when this first took place and there was one family that was approved and next up, and we had to say, you know, the music has stopped and there's not a chair for you, and they're eligible for a four-bedroom. And the next one up is a three, and so if we can make it a four, that family can be taken care of, assuming that they still meet the criteria, which it appears that they do. And so this is something that I'm just kind of uncovering, but we may be back to ask if we can, it'll fit perfectly well on the lot if we can make a switch. Because the way the permit is set up now, it's specific homes on specific lots and any adjustments, we come back and, and seek your approval.
So the lots you're requesting that be released, again, the math works out, some of the proper number of affordable, of affordable are in amongst those lots?
I think so. There's an overriding control though that you have that's not really based on the lot releases, it's based on, we can't get a certificate of occupancy. So we, we wouldn't expect to build out all, all the lots that we're asking for release. Now, we would be seeing what the sales, what happens with sales. The reason we're, we're going to build the one that we're planning to build this winter, if we can get your approval with this lot release is because somebody wants that lot and that house.
That's a market rate house?
Yes, a market rate house.
So at the moment, um, you have released four affordable units and fifteen market rates, that's slightly under the ratio. And released versus constructed are two different things, I assume. Right, the way that this reason says, one affordable unit must be constructed for every three market rate units.
Right.
Right now, you're right there at three and twelve, correct?
We're right there.
One of our, for every three would be four market, four affordable. So that mileage...
I was using a new math.
Yeah, they need a new, they, no, they're fine, I think. They just need a chart.
The six, the sixteenth home will have to be unaffordable. The twelfth has to be unaffordable, which is there.
One and three, one and three.
Right, oh, right, 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 right. Right, yeah.
So my new math was right.
Yeah, you're right.
So you would not be able to get a CO on another market rate until that sixteenth house, which has to be affordable, or before, but not no later than that?
Yeah, I think we could get our fifteenth CO, but not our sixteenth. The sixteenth would have to be in a, we would have to have the sixteenth before we could get, um, another market rate. We could get one more market rate. But we're planning to build four over the winter, possibly six. If we build six, we'll be building two affordables actually, which is why we want to get the release of lots four and five. I think lot four is an affordable. And you may be right, we hadn't really looked at the release program to see if there were enough, you know, we hadn't looked at the ratio in relation to the release program when we got the first number of them released. It may have been that there's only four affordables in the first group.
That's how, it seems like five have been released, if I'm reading this correctly. No, only four.
No, I think only four have been released, yeah. We want to get lot, the affordable number one, which is on lot four, released in this grouping today, as well as some other ones.
So you can't, you can't build the last market rate house before the last affordable is completed?
Okay, are there any other questions or are we all good with what's been done?
I looked at the photos that were in the cloud and it's like the road looks...
I didn't know if it offered, I don't think you said you did.
Yeah, there's pictures.
I went through the, uh, the gym and the pool area.
Urbanism, you know.
Manscaping, pretty good, okay.
Thank you.
And you can't tell the difference between, you can't tell which one's affordable and which one's market rate?
It's hard to tell.
Which was intended?
It's hard to tell. Without doing too much tooting of our own horn, the project won a very significant architectural planning award a couple of years ago as the best new affordable development in eastern Massachusetts in 2012. So we're very proud of it. We think it's coming out really well.
Right, uh, do you want to comment on this, this recommendation? The applicant submitted a standing plan in certain line of condition two point four of the CP, which stipulates that one affordable unit must be constructed for a free? Or are we okay with it?
I'm impressed you submit the schedule of your build out for the last two.
I'm, I'm happy to do that and...
And they can't be really, I have to release people, Ed has to release them anyway in terms of ATC, so nothing can happen, you know that that's the requirement.
Okay, well, let's work together. I'm, I'm happy to give you the, a schedule that meets exactly what you're looking for.
Okay. Okay? Are you out? I'm just curious, do you still, so you, people in the old lottery, which was quite a while ago, they're still feed up? Some of them.
Yeah, we're probably going to need to do a new lottery for the future, but there was somebody who had gotten to a certain point in the lottery where we were having discussions about, uh, timing and everything, and so that one kind of gets treated a little bit differently. And so as somebody who kind of had more of a promise to, to move in, the other ones are on a big, big, long waiting list that's gotten very old, so it's probably going to be a new lottery for, for the future.
Who is in charge of the lottery?
So the, the lottery process is overseen by a monitoring agent, which is a, you know, a, a group that's under the supervision of the state housing department. And so they oversee the lottery. We, um, we have a consultant that specializes in this particular business and, but we submit all of our plans and get them approved by the monitoring agent. Monitoring agent is the Housing Assistance Corporation of Cape Cod.
Yeah, okay.
So they, they know about what we're doing and you know them, of course, because they're doing the, the new project here.
Okay. Where do they advertise?
I don't know, but it's, you know, local paper.
It's local, right?
Yeah, it's local. The, the, when we did it before, I think there were, you know, two or three hundred people who applied and who filled out enough paperwork so they got a number and put their number in the hat and, and they pulled five.
And of those five, did they, did they meet the criteria?
Uh, they, one actually dropped out, three met and are in a house now, and this was the fourth one who met it and was kind of ready to go and then we had to put on the brakes on the project.
So you anticipate a new lottery soon?
But you also anticipate that the person that, that was successful in the lottery will go forward?
I think so, you know, they're, they're going to need to come forward with new information on their income and assets and the criteria that are there that they need to be able to meet. But seems, seems, seems so.
Right. And what, what will you need from the board at that point?
I don't know that there's anything. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to come and give you updates if you're interested, but I don't know that there's any action that the board needs to take for a new lottery.
The three to the four, you said you might need to come back to go to three to four?
Yeah, so I had it here.
Well, can we kill that bird?
This out in the last little while, but...
I would prefer to ask consultant, Ed Marshall.
All right.
Okay.
Because wouldn't it have to be... This is totally new, I don't know anything about it.
Right, I, I just figured it out last few days, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we're gonna...
It is, it is specified in the permit and an amendment there too, so...
The three and four situation?
That, well, there's a, there's a specific breakdown of what units, models are in each lot and each model has a specific number of bedrooms. So it probably is in substantial modification, but I was going to check with our consultant.
Yeah, in this case, there'd be any problem, but...
We wouldn't be seeking an increase in the number of bedrooms, we would put a four here and put a three someplace where there's currently a four.
Okay. So, uh, is, is anybody, did I already ask, is anybody in the audience who want to talk about this? So, so would you like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll be happy to make it, I just want to make sure. We've, we've, uh, any issues that, that the planning board had have been met today by the applicant's answers?
The, well, the planning board is not making any recommendations as to this, however, I had met with Andrew Borst and easily and they are aware of this and I've discussed it with Ed Marshall as well, you know. I'm, I'm fine.
Just the ratio of...
I'm very on top of what number of lines you can see from the flow chart. I know exactly what's going on according to the site management.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, that any approval or release of the lot you're requesting. Okay? Someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, well, made this up. Any further discussion? No, all of them, better to stay out.
I will have you sign the release before you do that.
All righty. Thank you.
Do you think, do you think we can continue tomorrow's next one? Thank you.
Well...
I would, thanks, I'll just make that announcement if somebody doesn't want this, that I...
All right, so we're gonna move on to... I think it's...
I can use this one.
I think everybody's been here, sorry. I think we got to turn them off.
Well, it's for the video.
Because of the video.
Even that. Be silent. All right, well, we'll keep trying. You good? Sounds better.
Okay, so we are now...
Jeff and Mike are here, so, so Mark.
And I'll be traveling here in September, too.
Oh, okay. I mean, I'm not going to predict what's going to continue, but would anybody like a different board? Are they?
I guess my only question is if it's continued, um, and when we have four person board, then I guess I would ask for a continuation to the...
As long as Mike and Jeff and Mark are in the room.
If they had a fashion again.
Fine.
You good? Mark?
I'm good.
All right, why don't we proceed then? 2515 Bonita Bar LLC, One Chins Way, for the applicant.
The applicant, Roba Wyman, this is an application for variance pursuant to 13916K side yard setback to allow for covered outdoor dining area for the restaurant Island Kitchen, which is at One Chins Way. It's a residential commercial, MyPod district, and it's on a highly irregularly shaped lot with an unusual separation between a portion of the lot and the Chins Way layout, which creates a situation that is totally unique to this property and is, it doesn't affect any other properties within the same building district that we're in now. Just by way of the, very brief background, I appear before the planning board in March of this year and received approval to modify what was down with the existing patio area in order to provide an additional four parking spaces. Planning board approved the relocation of the twenty outdoor seats to the front of the structure. Now, this is where it gets tricky, the front of the structure is the side yard. And if I may approach and give you some photos so that you can get a better sense of it. So what you see here, where the sign is, where the front door is, that's the side yard. And, oh, but the, so the front, you would know as a, with the front door on One Chins Way, that's the side yards. And that became very apparent when we went to get building permit to do this, and Marcus decided that that was the side yard, and that we needed to, to make a degree. So...
Because it was the front yard, or you would not need a release?
Because it's zero setback in front now. And so part of the patio that we're proposing goes into the front yard, which is the side, which is this. It's, I've never seen...
Where, where is the front yard?
The front yard is on the side. It's in the parking lot.
It must be that's forty point three.
This is the front yard.
It must be that, is it the frontage on Chins Way?
So why wouldn't you tell me that?
No, the frontage is not on Chins Way. The frontage is on the side. And that's, they're all the same, they're all the same.
The forty-two point one eight is the frontage? Well, I don't, I don't understand what you mean, but like, where is the front yard taken from?
This is the front, this is front, this is front yard here.
Where's that on our map? So that's this. This is the front yard. This would be the front, you're saying that this is, this picture is taken from, looking at that?
Yeah, and I'm saying that this, this is the side yard. Why are people sitting in the paddling?
Well, I'm asking about the zoning frontage. Where is the zoning? This is, this is the Chins Way lot, so that's the frontage.
No, that is the side yard.
Now, where is the front of it?
The frontage is, this is the frontage.
But there's still, that's on their front.
Yeah, I don't understand. How can that be front?
It got bumped, it went to, Marcus, it went to...
Is this what the frontage is?
I don't understand. Can you, so this is the side yard here?
What?
Yeah.
How are you?
Just like them.
Patch of fridge for Bonita Bar. So this is my frontage.
Right. So that's why, this is, that's why this is the side yard.
And Marcus is calling this the side yard.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Not really.
Why? The front door is right here.
This is, this is... That makes you have one, two, three sides.
That's a, but it busts into the lot, so why wouldn't that be a side?
This is a, this is a non-billable area, it's a nine by twenty, it's not billable.
No, because if you didn't have, if you, if you were trying to build something else and someone was trying to tell us that this was the frontage, they had fifty feet of frontage, we would never, we wouldn't tell them that's their frontage, because that's somebody else's lot.
Yeah, yeah, this is definitely, he's interpreting it correctly, whether or not...
Whether or not it makes sense.
But it's very strange.
Yeah, so that's front, that's front.
Now, do they, do they actually park in front of this? Do they have, do they actually have a parking?
Parking is shared parking.
Okay, so it's shared, and it has to stay shared, I'll say this at the time.
And they've got eight spaces in the relocated area, which is the front, which is Marcus is calling it.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you been on, put it on this one?
I would like just to point out that if they have a clean lot here, you couldn't really develop, you know, front yard setback, you know, which, you could build, maybe you wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, of course, I know it's just a, another funky lot.
Yeah.
Is there any... So, let me just begin with the...
The front here...
Yes, this, this here is parking, is a shared parking.
And there are eight parking spaces in the area that they just changed. That was the patio, and now there are eight parking spaces.
They just get out, though. But how do they get Alex when they park here? If somebody's parked at space number four, how does number five out?
Can we get a, get a light space?
Do you know what I mean? If somebody's parked right here...
So one of them is counted as an employee parking, I mean, you take our calculation, but if, if space number five is typically where I park, and then these three spaces are for customers, and so we satisfy our things, we're barely making, you know...
So, so you're saying that nobody's ever tried to back out of here, correct? Because you need to, it's, it's employee, it's employee parking and it's parking for the customers.
But isn't, I, I don't really care, but isn't an employee parking space supposed to be accessible? Or you can, you can say it's not accessible once you park your car there? You drop it.
I agree.
I'm not saying from a practical standpoint.
I don't agree, however, when we were presented with this plan, they, they parked it with a senior defense, right? They could never even lead me back around, especially if you were there.
What was there was, the whole entire point of the entire project wasn't to ever start with the patio, it was to add four parking spaces, because parking is such a problem in the area. And, I mean, within...
He had off-site parking before, he wanted to have on-site parking, and so that's, that was the whole idea. And now he's got eight spaces.
It's not, it's not really working. It's one place.
My private trade gift, my secret. It could be hard. But people also park, you need to park, that's true.
This is a space where I used to have my old patio, and we really had parking three spaces. So we, the, the overall project really added, you know, five spaces, four and a half.
And you got planning board approval to move your outdoor seating to here?
We did, in March.
And now, just to be clear, you want to cover that?
Let's query. We, the area that is covered to the west, enough providing seating for...
No, so this is a side yard from our, for our kitchen, right? And the idea is that our servers would be able to walk under a covered porch and serve our guests. If you think about the hardship on the day, the idea is that, you know, our busiest day is obviously a fat lady, and right now it is not. And so the idea is that for covered porches, that we can serve our, our guests as a side yard.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
So just, as I said, by way of the very brief background, we roughly approved the technical award with this plan, in March 2015, and moved the patio to frontages, considered the side yard, etc. So now we have the eight spaces on the side we're going to do, and we're now requesting that the outdoor dining area covered has recently approved by the ATC, and I would just see that the ATC approval, and just to see the place look like.
So they're in here. They're the packet, yeah, they're here.
So that was approved, and what we'd like to do, the proposed covered outdoor dining area would be within a few inches of the property line, in the zoning district that requires a five-foot side yard setback and no front yard setback. So for the portion that's extended over to the side, there is no problem. We're not asking for a review, we're not only asking for a review for the section in the front, which is the side yard. The portion of the covered porch that would be in the side yard setback would be located on the northeast side of the building, and that butts Chins Way. Clearly, to look at that, property one would assume the front yard is where the front of the building is, but this is not the case. The, the, these four sections of the building is technically the side yard despite the perceived frontage, because the base is Chins Way, the front door of the building is on Chins Way, it's accessible in Chins Way, and the address is One Chins Way. But the legal front of the vault is on the westward portion, and that portion with a colored L-shaped porch, not inclined to be, we're just asking for the front section of it. The covered porch would resemble the pharmacy porches and the older names that are on other establishments, such as the Atlas Pharmacy, Fish House, Gray Lady, Island Pharmacy, Star and Char. I think what's important here is the, the MyPod plan, and the whole purpose, my theme of MyPod is to promote consistency and quality in the forming and siting of buildings, allowing the covered porch in the section of the building that has perceived frontage to promote consistency in sitting of the vaults on Chins Way. The patio in its current location butts the parking area, which has seen a dramatic increase in traffic recently with the opening of three restaurants on both sides of Island Kitchen. Island Kitchen's an informal, wealthy family restaurant, and Apple believes that a covered porch without flapper denies for more lively neighbors by creating a tranquil atmosphere, and additionally, moving conditions, typical hunting tucket poses risk to the stability of umbrellas and portable units, which is also a concern of ours, due to the proximity of cars and vehicles. Apple wishes to advocate spirit in town of Iowa by constructing a covered porch that promotes safety and convenience for the public. The renovation will also extend the use of the patio area, allowing it to be used in complement weather and also increasing the occupancy of the restaurant, which has been improved right to this, to this, to the twenty seats outside. Another purpose of MyPod is to draw economic vitality, and applicant feels that prohibiting the construction of MyPod porch could effectively add, act to prohibit his ability to use its outdoor area on many occasions, and would not allow the extended season of this, causing a financial hardship to the applicant. And I think what's important out here is, Island Kitchen is the only restaurant in MyPod that is open year-round and serves three days a day, and it's really the only one. The planning board met Monday night and gave the application, a man's favorable recommendation, and I'd asked you to please consider the uniqueness of this irregularly shaped lot, and it's kind of MyPod, and a financial hardship, that would be incurred if applicant is not able to apprehend, but of the previously appointed twenty seats outside in complement of the weather. And you happy to answer any questions that you rank out? Anyone?
Yeah. Um, we have the... Any questions from the board, or are we, where release, on what...
We have the same proposed hours?
Yes, nothing has changed on the hour.
Nothing's changing? And no outdoor music or anything under the patio there?
No.
Is there any proposal to put in plastic windows anywhere?
Plastic windows?
Roll down, you know, protection for wind and curtains, or, you know?
I'm, I'm not aware of it, but...
I was aware that you would need to ask for that, and if it would be something you would like to consider if you were a lot of people in the room going, but certainly would be a great area to go in.
The only reason I ask is I'm, I'm just wondering if that changes the, the square footage of the building.
No. But if they're, if they just roll down...
It's not permanent, and it's not a part of the structure from the activity.
If it comes, or all depends on, if you start to, and all of a sudden it turns, and we roll down the block.
Asking for the applicant's, not, not that I have a problem with this. Uh, do I agree with you?
Yeah. I agree?
I think it's an easier decision to come to because the area that, in a but, a lot of buts, is shared parking and, you know, it's not like it's green space and a new or it's being used, or it's, it's a shared parking area for both establishments and it leads to the other properties permit, so have to remain parking, you know, I mean, they, they didn't, you know, have anything in their package that they had just like wrapped.
I didn't see anything.
That, that's a twenty-year lease of some sort, on that, that, that shared parking? If it's in some past decision, if that lapses, or...
No, we have, we had a lease for parking, and we no longer need that because that's why we replaced patio with extra spaces. So all the parking now that we have there, which was, which required and has gone to three required, which includes mine.
Okay, well, so it was since that, what I was reading was referencing the old agreement that off-site parking, if that lasts...
And that was the... Yes, because we don't need that anymore.
Yeah, I sort of agree with you, but my, my problem really is only, when we deal with them, that gap becomes, becomes...
I don't think you need another lot.
Well, you just, I, you know...
The one behind you is usually regular, so I, it's funny that they're getting a lot.
Well, I understand that, I think the sort of, the thing that makes it slightly different at some point out there was that the parking is right in front of this.
And that somehow is, has to, that, you said that that has to remain parking, or the restaurant behind loses their special permit, is that what you mean?
So, the, the way that their special permit, I can't remember what it's written, so I'll start with that, but the way that the special permit is written for the Gray Lady, in the spirit that it was approved on, is that it has shared, shared informal parking with the two butters. The Gray Lady doesn't meet its parking requirements with its parking lot, and so it shares it and accounts, you know, parking in Dayton Street and Satan Atlas as well. And by the way, you know, one thing I did point out, you know, all the restaurants, either their permits were supposed to be, you know, year-round, neither of them are, and, and we are. And this area in front, you know, of this...
Be careful what you say, because if the zoning officer works here, you might ruin your, your, your business by making your, your, your fellow restaurateurs and members stay up in year-round.
Good point.
Sure. So, the, the area in front, the, the, the five parking spaces, the way I understand it, of where it would be pushing up a setback, is that they, you know, if they took those parking, it, it usually was up to the building.
And also, there's nothing that can be consolled from that site, anyway. Well, you have zero, you could build only fifteen feet wide. Well, you have zero, you could build only 15 feet long. It seems, it seems like it's not going to happen.
All right, if we were to grant this relief, we'll say it to you as you say to everybody, don't go, give yourself a little bit of room, don't go right.
It's like a lines width away from the parking lot.
Like I said, we're just trying to get a little filter for the rain.
Because you will have to get it surveyed after the fact. And if it's somehow over, don't come back. Just take it there.
I agree.
Because right now, as Lucy said, it looks like it's on the line.
Not quite.
Give yourself a little bit of room.
Yeah, we surveyed it, literally, I was there standing.
Just saying. Okay, how do we feel? In general, not a lot. I'm going to go and support it. Is there anything in the audience who wants to speak about this? Give me another signal. I thought that's what you were saying. I don't know. Eleanor, do you want to say something?
No, I just want you to go to the public.
Oh, okay, I did get the signal. Okay, because there was no one else there. So Michael would support it.
I would. Did I make a motion?
It worked for him.
I will.
We've got that, and no other, nor any requests. And here it is.
All right, he doesn't need approval.
Okay, so Lucy made the motion, Susan seconded it. Any further discussions? All of us can pay this out.
All right. Eleanor, do you want to use the quiet? Yes.
Okay, moving right along. I cannot sit on 48 Center. We all sit up right now.
I'd rather not sit. Cheryl?
I'd rather not, just for something proximate.
Okay, so this is application 26-15, 48 Center Street, Inc., for the applicant.
The upper verbatim here, this is similar to a lot of applications we've had in front of you recently. We're asking to rescind the previous Board of Appeals decisions. Our location is three of them, two will never be reported back to them until they...
Never recorded them?
Well, definitely, I don't know. There's a 1988 one, a 1991, and a 1991 decision. And what we're asking is that we just rescind them all because what, since the zoning change, we currently do everything that's there and anything that we have proposed to do is also allowed. They've got parking waivers in the past, and breakout is retail space on the first floor, second floor has a three-bedroom apartment, third floor has two, two-bedroom apartments and three guest rooms, a weekly guest house in the past, which is also not allowed to use. The building is on the market for sale. The public who's had looked at it so far have not indicated any interest in including a guest house. My guess is, although I don't know that, that probably never would be a guest house, but, you know, we don't know that. And it's only, it would allow us to have a guest house if we, if we chose to, so we'd just like to rescind the previous application decision.
So you can, you can do everything and you'll...
We can do everything that's there and what we expect anybody's going to want in the future.
And everything that we approved?
Excuse me?
We do everything that we give you relief for?
Yeah, the only difference that we're, we're holding to and I believe we can do it, is when they went for the last approval, they asked for one retail space on the first floor, and they wanted the option, and the buyers are kept up to it. So, and that's, it can be a matter of broadly, not only. So there's nothing else that, getting new apartments is a matter of like being lost 3,000 square feet, so they would have two, you know, separate apartments for one for 1,000 square foot. So I, so we don't anticipate that there's anything more that people need, if there's anything that's not good or necessary, we'll get after it.
Does it look like there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak? Any, any concerns, anybody? Seems pretty straightforward.
So the zoning, current zoning, Bible would just take over.
I think you have a few.
Yes, yes.
Some plain water, I don't know, it was a bike, bike.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to support the request to rescind all previous granted special permits for the latest at 48 Center Street.
For a second? All of them is favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm checking. I just pointed out that we again find Mr. O'Mara's signature on a special permit that went back to 1988, just to show how old he really is.
I even remember who the applicant's attorney was. Ted Telford.
Was it ruling?
It's on the application.
Shows your longstanding dedication to the board.
I miss that guy.
Yeah, we all...
I thought, I thought I actually saw one on a 1985, but I can't remember.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, have a seat.
That's not going to sit well with Mr. Thompson, who is trying to terminate.
He is up to... Right.
You mean after reappointment?
With any other applicant.
Were there any applicants?
I have no idea.
Well, they're intimidated by that. A lot of people approached me, and then I admitted. All right, moving on.
Who's sitting on this one?
Oh.
Oh, I can take, I can take.
Okay.
Which one is this one?
This is, I think it gets over. Okay. 2715 William Einstein and Suzanne Einstein, 76 foot road for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Dale forgot before I started, I don't leave upstage Mr. O'Mara, but we wanted to remind Mr. Lester, that I was chairman of this department in 1983, five years before.
I don't know why, I still have braces there.
Anyway, I represent Bill and Suzanne Einstein, who own property 76 foot road, and Bill's here today. They bought the property in 1994. It's an oversized lot in Harlan District, has in excess of 23,000 square feet. And on the property, there's a primary dwelling and accessory building that is used for, with no approval for decisions for kind of a bunch of distinctive purposes. The property's conforming in every respect with the zoning bylaw, except the accessory building is 3.8 feet from the rear lot line at its closest point. Five feet is the minimum lot set, set back required on this zoning property. Bill and Suzanne gone to the HTC and received approval for adding a little less than 200 square feet to the building, putting the second story line, or adjusting or modifying the second story. But they're subject to all special permits that were granted in 1989, that the first special permit in February of 89 allowed the conversion of this accessory building to a garage workshop to this living quarters, if you will. And it was modified about six months later. The issue is, in those special permit decisions, there were conditions that limited the use of the building, said number one, it couldn't have a kitchen, it was a successful building. Number two, that it could increase its ground cover, that if it only be used by the same household as the principal residence. And the modification in July of 89 was, we changed some of the floor plan, because the board put another condition on it, said the lot could only be used for storage for living quarters. That's just a little bit of background. The Einsteins are here today to ask you to remove the condition that says it can't have a kitchen. Remove the condition that says it can't extend the footprint of the accessory building and allow them to have a secondary dwelling. The condition that says that building should only be used by the same household that uses the primary dwelling is fine with them, and they're cognizant of the director butler who supports the application, that is asked of this condition still. So they'll recoup it, that would test. There are no other letters in opposition. It's kind of a good narrative story that Bill and Suzanne bought the property when they had little kids, they've been coming there for more than 20 years. Now the kids are not little, they're in their twenties, they're adults. The Einstein children are moving forward with their lives, and it would be helpful for the Einstein family to have not only the primary dwelling with parents, but the second dwelling with its complete. There've been no incidents, no concerns, no objections over the past 20 years while Bill and Suzanne have been living there. It is an oversized lot. This 1.2 foot set bath, not a conforming, I would suggest, admire, in the circumstances, what they want to do by upgrading this accessory building and making it a secondary dwelling is not to pull the wool over people's eyes and say, well, it's not the human habitation and sleeping up there or something. It'd be upfront, say they don't want a secondary dwelling there, and go forward. So Bill's here, if you have any questions for him, what we proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's been going on there for 20 years. It fits into the standard for special permit modification, if you will, removing these conditions. No neighbors have objected, so I'd ask you directly to leave, not to bump into each other.
Okay. Anybody?
Just a comment that under today's zoning, what we have there is illegal, because you can't sleep in the accessory building. So this would...
I'm just curious, how does that work? Fifty years ago?
It's very interesting because back in those ancient times, the eighties, the board regularly ran as believed by special permit, who had a garage, bunkhouse, or sleeping quarters, and made a distinction between just sleeping and sleeping and cooking. And, you know, this whole fiction that we've been living with for a lot, lot longer than most of you, about trying to clarify what's a secondary dwelling and what's not, it's been troublesome, and it's been hard to apply. And it seems to be that the right course is for someone to come to the board and say, we want a building we can live in and cook in, we want it to be secondary dwelling. I think Michael's wife must have also liked that now you couldn't necessarily have the so-called sleeping quarters properties.
But blessed by virtue of...
No, yeah, it's approved by the prior special permits. Specifically, the first special permit in February of 89 said it's this accessory building, this could be converted from a garage workshop to an accessory building with living quarters. A living quarters seems to be the something equivalent to habitation, equivalent to a secondary dwelling.
What I don't like is when people come back after, start an application in 1989.
These are prior, the prior owners who gave them. Bill had nothing to do with it.
I mean, that's like the Chinese, you know, the Chinese way, you're starting a very long horizon.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, if you could say at least wait 25 years?
Yeah, 25 years.
Well, actually, I think it was Builders Association, the lobbyist, that created the, they wanted to get the kitchen in, so they approved the gross, the job.
All right, anyway, seems pretty...
Just a comment on that, the building cap, which was instituted in 1981, had just expired in 1988. So the board was probably still reacting to, I don't know, was it their, you know, braces?
You're too young.
Not quite, actually. But it may be that the predisposition to not ran a second dwelling, which is specified in the permits, had to do more with the building cap, the recent expiration. And the board.
And you know, there's some...
I didn't want to say that, but...
We remember some public officials who would always count the number of secondary dwellings.
Doctor Now?
Now, I have a question. If this board decides to approve this application today, and the applicant decides that he wants to go in a different direction and make the location of this building perform in a lot, if the building hasn't moved it, does he have to come back there?
No.
I would say no.
No, that would be a zoning administrator's decision, because that would be making a non-conforming building or a conforming.
Right, but he...
And then he's done.
So, so you think Marcus would send them to you?
Yes, if they're taking a building that is in a setback and making it less...
Is that the permit?
Oh, you really...
I think the applicant would go to... Eleanor, in the first instance, not go to my office.
Good? Anybody else?
Good.
Well, someone make a motion, move on.
I move to modify the special permit so that in number three, conditions A, B, and C, A, B, and D are deleted, and C is left, says all occupants of the subject structures are limited to persons associated with the household, occupied physical dwelling at the time of such action. That's what you're agreeing to, correct?
And agree to that, and if I may, I'd ask you to permit the conversion of this accessory building to a second dwelling. Changing news.
Yeah.
So that's your motion?
Yes.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Does anybody in the audience want to talk about this?
Can I ask a question, Paul? A secondary dwelling is allowed in this area.
Yes.
Well, and I guess, right, it needs to be answered, that if we pick that, maybe we can call it, because do we have to limit it to the occupancy?
I mean, you said the neighbor wanted that.
The neighbor doesn't want it, did ask to not.
Closest to the rear lot line, non-conforming, has asked you for that. We'd love to have no opinions, but I think...
Who's the butler?
Seraphine.
Seraphine, Joe and Nancy Seraphine, 3131, they just did a...
Wait a second, they're the closest ones to that?
They're there.
I understand, but they're not close to you.
Their off, their rear off, our, our hedge separates us, our back, backyard hedge.
Separates?
Right down the block.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
So, so under that scenario, Eleanor, you couldn't release that condition if they picked the building up and moved it and were... the building up and moved it and were proper distance from the main house? The fire department could still access both buildings, and it was parking?
Yeah, and the planning board will have to approve this as well. But the conditions apply until they're released by this board?
That's correct. So, in that scenario, would you, do you have the power to release that condition?
I do not.
I suggest coming back in 2000. And I would anticipate there will be no, Michael will still be here. I don't think there will be no other...
I mean, I'm not trying to make an issue where there isn't one, if you guys are fine in to do that.
Well, it's a direct debate. Obviously, the Einsteins relate to our conditions, but, you know...
They can always come back. The neighbors would listen.
We have a nice relationship with them, so we don't want to screw them up.
Okay, then let's just leave it.
I like your point.
All right, so Michael's motion stands, there's no modification. Chair, seconded it. Any further discussion? More discussion?
Hi.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a little other business to discuss. The certification of power...
Trying to become all-powerful.
...and duties of the zoning administrator pursuant to section 139 that 29 states. Approval of verse 1, approval for zoning administrator impose construction moratorium conditions and ZA decisions for projects in ROH and SOH districts. So you want to sort of be able, if I'm reading that correctly, just compose the same...
I'll give you the background. I had done a couple of decisions, and I had not imposed, had never thought to do so, had not imposed construction moratorium. One was in the SOH, one was in the ROH. A property owner who happens to rent this property said, I really think there should be construction moratorium in the summer. So I went to my supervisors, they said, that's fine. I checked with the applicant, they said, that's fine. So I checked on all ends, but then Marcus said, I can enforce this unless I know the board approves it. So what I would do is probably write a letter that you would all sign, that would, you know, be some sort of a memo.
In case it was left out.
Marcus wasn't opposing it, he just said, I need some sort of proof that this is enforced.
Well, it's left out because the zoning administration, the folks don't come to us. So he wants us to give her the approval, a blanket approval to add those to all zoning administrators.
Not all, it would be, you know, really in the denser districts.
In the ROH area.
And I don't really do any CDT stuff, there's nothing much about, but it would also apply it.
Right, so we don't have to do the letter once, such as...
Right, I would do a memo, and you would all sign it, or Ed would sign it, maybe, and it would just be something. Marcus just wants something to confirm.
If somebody applies a building permit to reshingle their house, and some portion of that house is not conforming, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't issue on that, but you would have worked on it.
No, but I very likely wouldn't be doing anything, shingling doesn't...
Shingling doesn't come to them.
Yeah, but if they're doing building in addition, or any kind of an extension that falls within my purview, and it's in the SOH, ROH, and/or CDT, in these very dense neighborhoods, then I would very likely, I would look at the plot plan, I would look at the locusts, and I would see how close the neighbors are. I'm not just going to do a blanket thing if the neighbors are far away. But we've had a ton of complaints this summer, of people calling.
Oh, yeah.
In the R1 downtown area as well.
Well, if they issued a building permit, they wouldn't have a lot.
They can, if there's a building permit, they won't, if there's a construction moratorium, they cannot do exterior in most cases.
No, but the only reason it's a construction moratorium is if we've imposed it and the planning board's imposed it.
Right. But they could pull, they could pull their permit in earlier and start the work. That happens.
If you want?
If you can issue, or I issue, a construction moratorium from, I did some decisions in the winter, and they didn't start the work until, you know, after Memorial Day. But they pulled their permit before that. So, some people might start it in May, and they'd have to come to a halt, as you have seen with things downtown.
I think there's...
Wait, so are you getting complaints?
I don't think it's reasonable at all.
I know, you don't like them at all.
I don't think just because you need relief.
Getting complaints because there's some...
From people who are complaining about construction, loud construction noise.
But it's, but it's allowed construction, it's not construction to be, have you had any complaints on things that have been issued moratoriums?
No.
And, but they complained to you, they should complain to the building department.
Well, there's no, there's no basis in being...
Right, no, I know, but I guess what I'm saying is, those people should complain to the building departments, maybe to, and then maybe there is like lobby for a construction moratorium or something. I know, but you know what I'm saying, like, there's, people can feel filled when they want to go.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
Oh, wait, I need you to sign this one. So, I'm not going to be using this in the blanket kind of way, just so you understand.
See, you'll know the board members individually.
How many, how many of these instances are there a year?
Of the 30 decisions I did in the last, I only began doing it when an objection was brought to me by an abutter, and she was going to appeal the decision.
No, I mean, how many zoning administrator decisions, you say you've done 30?
I do, I did more last year, and had slightly less this year, but this only came up this year.
I understand.
So, I've only done two where I've imposed, three actually, where I've imposed a construction moratorium.
The way I remember, this came up, and I can't remember who the administrator was, was John Brecher?
You've preceded me.
When he started this policy? He always let us know what he was doing before he did it.
I just feel more comfortable in general that you, that at least the board through chair, and where...
What decision?
Any, any ZA decision. Because I don't want to get blindsided by some neighbor who, oh, the ZDA approved, and I, I don't know what you're talking about, so...
It doesn't say ZDA anywhere on the decision, by the way.
No, I know that, but people's perception.
Right, just a heads up, so everyone stays informed.
The legality, I'm not worried about it legally. I'm simply saying that I think we should be made aware, whether it's everybody...
I think it should be everyone. Just anyone on this board could get a call.
Yeah, I agree. So I think if you're prepared to, and I know we're not always as responsive as you would like, but I think that, I think it would be better as a policy that we're made aware of what they...
And I think, as far as the policy goes, if a board member does have a problem, or an issue, or a question, they should respond immediately.
Oh, literally.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's newsie.
She was...
You know, for real though, because you can't hold it back.
I agree, I know what you're having to say. So, let's just sort of modify the procedure.
Yeah, wait a second, I have a question. Do you want her to notify us prior to her making the decision? Or after they release, or after she's made the decision? If she notifies us after she's made the decision, and someone's got a...
No, it would have to be prior.
I feel like that's what John used to do.
So every decision she makes, you want to be notified?
You should know that I'm doing this with the applicant's knowledge. I don't just issue the decision, I tell them this is happening, and I look at the plans, and I see how close the neighbors are. I'm not just willy-nilly applying this, I've done it three times with the applicant.
No, I'm talking about all 30 that you did last year, and all 15 this year, all of them.
But just shoot us an email and say, hey, you know, 26 Goldfinch came in for da-da-da-da, and I'm doing this, so that...
You really want that information, okay?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
You don't have to look at your email.
Hold on, I have a question. When you say you've done 30 ZA decisions, can you give me an example besides moratorium?
The moratorium has only come up this year.
Okay, so what other, so we're...
So this year I've done 16 decisions, and of those, three had moratoriums.
Okay, so are we talking about all decisions that Eleanor makes?
Absolutely.
Okay, notify us prior to you making, prior to Eleanor making a decision, she's to notify all of us?
I think that's what we're saying, just saying, I'm about, you know, this is where I'm coming down on this, and, yeah, check, 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 it all works for me. I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to have another hearing about it. I'd just like to be made aware, because you said you've done 45 of these things in the last two years?
Two and a half years, probably.
That's a lot. I'd like to be made aware of it.
Well, can you give me an idea of what they were?
They're all pretty much the same thing, where you have a building that is in a setback, and people are making an alteration to it. Maybe they're lifting it up and replacing a failed rubble foundation. Maybe they're making a minor bump out extension. If it's anything more than minor, I bring it to you, because I think that the neighbors would care. These have all been minor additions. A lot of it is foundation replacement.
Then I don't anticipate a problem if you email us and say that's what's going on.
Wait, just like a summary, not like a full day's staff.
I don't think it's a big deal.
But we're really, I mean, we gave the ZA the responsibility, and now you're saying, now you want it cleared.
We're not sad.
No, I don't think that's what he's saying. He's saying if someone calls him and says, hey, this is the decision that was made...
Has this happened since 2012, because they've been, been issued since 2012?
I remember when, and I believe it was John Brecher was the administrator, when we had a meeting to discuss whether we wanted him to take this authority.
Which we did, we wanted him to take it.
Yes, he did. And he did, and we always notified the board prior to doing it. And he probably did, I'm thinking, four, I was gonna say five, four of five, okay.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Leslie took over for him in April 2013, and these began, they trickled in in 2012, when it first became a possibility, because the bylaw was amended. There were more in 2013 than there were in 2014, and so far I've only got 16, and while we're halfway through the year. So I'm happy to send them to you, I just think you're gonna, people are usually in a hurry, they have a 30-day appeal period. My agenda is to accommodate people, they check with Marcus, Marcus says it needs me. I do my decision. If I have any questions, I go to my supervisors, or I would go to you, any questions. I haven't had any questions, they've been very...
Let's try, and if it doesn't work, we'll go back to you.
Okay, but wait a second, it's just notifying us, or getting approval from the five regular board members?
I think a reasonable expectation, as Michael said, if you have an objection, you have to fight off in the first area. And if silence is a tacit approval, tell what's going on. Or if you're not interested, don't open your email, I don't really care, but...
Can I make one suggestion? Put a tag on it, well...
That's on time. A real time, two days.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. If you don't respond...
Maybe you can move forward.
Done.
Okay, so...
So you need me to send the entire application and the decision? How would you know if my decision's accurate if you don't see the entire application? You'll have to see the entire application.
What does that entail?
It entails what you see in your pocket, for instance. It's the same...
It's unreasonable to know what the hell is going on.
It's not, I'm just asking you, would you want to see the entire application, as well as the decision?
I think when, just to, it seems like it's a little tense right now, when John would do it, and maybe you've got lost in translation with, and you had Leslie, and then you, whatever, but John would just like, I think it was like a two-sentence thing, you know, and he would describe it, and just, it was just like a friendly, like, this is what's happening in the world of zoning.
Okay, so nobody ever told me that that was the case, so now you're telling me, so now I will do it.
Yeah, so, so I don't think we need you to send, I don't, I now need to see, I have faith in you to make the decision, because we've given you, and we wanted when it was going on with John, like, we really wanted that, because we didn't want to be bogged down with all of that, and it's totally...
That's the point of the bylaw, yeah.
Right, so I just, I think if you've only done 16, like, when we have a meeting, and you say, hey, this is coming up, or this is whatever, or if it's in between meetings, I think we know that this is what's, this is what's going on.
No, I'm gonna do what Ed asks, he wants me to email you the decisions, and if you don't get back to me with the 48 hours, I'll just file one. Or if you do and say it's fine, I'll help. But I'll need all four of the five people I sent it to, or four of the board members I sent it to, to, I guess, I mean, there's no actual protocol.
No, no.
We need nothing from anybody. Again, a, a lack of response is tantamount to approval, if you will, it's not even approval, it's just to see if anybody here thinks something maybe needs further review. And if you don't respond in 48 hours, if one person responds in 48 hours, then it would be, let's go to step two. Okay, somebody has an issue with this. Or a question.
Or a question.
Yeah.
Probably a question.
I mean, I would think for the board in general, that would be more of a, just a CYA step, like you were saying, with a neighbor calling in and saying, you know, what happened here, because, I don't know, having, however many people we are, look at it, versus one, maybe something comes up that, I don't know. I mean, it never happened with John, like, I doubt it will happen with you, but...
It only takes one step, or, so, all I'm saying is, let's try slightly new...
Well, we're just going back to the way we used to do it. Except over email versus just like, he would like sit in that chair and just be like, here's what's going on, and that was it.
I don't think there were as many applications as Michael said. But I, you know, it seems like 45 in the last year and a half, or two, whatever, seems like a lot.
Well, those are 45 less applications right here, at this table. All those applications would have come to the table. That's why I was, I'm guessing, that's why we've seen a drop off in the number of applications.
That's part of it, and that was certainly the reason that we did it.
Yeah.
The one thing that I, I think that I did not want to see is this two-year time limit extended.
Well, why, why, are we selling on the one, and is that the second item?
I, I don't need to see, I don't think we need to, I don't want to see the entire application, or, I don't know.
I'm with you on that one, too, because I know where you're going down.
Well, my intention is to have all the information the application has, and typically they have an exhibit plan as well, using showing proposed...
But I think that comes in if one of us has a question, like, oh, wait, how come this is happening, or whatever, like, if...
I don't see how you can have much of a question if it's a recent, say, somebody doing something around a program. You know, I need to ask them, but that's just...
I don't think it would happen.
No, I mean, the decision has all the information, and I have a paragraph that's dedicated to the existing conditions on the building.
So then the decision, right, that's then it's...
Let's try. Doesn't always, you can start with it again, next month.
So where do you stand on the moratorium? You want to be to, I mean...
Oh, the moratorium, I think I'm fine with you doing that.
Well, I would say this, you just described a situation where there's no new additions going on, no lease going up, new foundations going underneath it. Now frankly, I think that's dangerous work, it's, it congests the area, and I don't think it should be done during the summer.
Well, wait a second, did they come to us, or was it just, did they come, did they come to the board?
This is through me.
For this one? Excuse me, but did the people have to come to the board for special permits for the construction?
Not now, they do not. Because they're staying in the exact same footprint.
No, because they're going to, they're going to Eleanor, so we don't see them, that's the whole point.
Oh, just come in with their footprint, I see.
So, so the question is, should they be, no build between Memorial Day and Labor Day be in effect for that scenario?
And it's, it's the ROH district?
Well, I was, I was putting that out there, ROH, SOH, in the event that I have a CDT application, because of the density of those districts. But R1 can be dense as well, I mean...
Yeah, but that's...
But you're not, you're correct, that the foundation work is pretty intense, and I happen to know that someone's going to appeal a decision I just did, and bring it to this board. They have 30-day appeal period of these decisions.
Well, it's gonna be over.
Because they feel the foundation work, it's a very tiny lot, and the abutters feel that's going to destabilize their structure, so I happen to know, you'll be seeing it.
Well, this is all the more, this goes back to the first point. That's what I'd like to know about before it's given approved, and, you know, because I don't want somebody coming to me, Ed, you're the chairman of the ZDA, how could you possibly have approved this? Well, I don't know what the hell you're talking about.
Or approved it without steel going underground?
No, some condition, something...
Like, asking the question, how are we gonna protect the neighbors' property?
Right, so did you put those conditions in there, about the steel and all that, we always do? I did not. So, okay, so, wait, so that's, I guess that's exactly what we're talking about, because I know for a fact, these two over here are like, if there's foundation work, like Michael especially, all the way in.
I've seen the results a half a dozen times, and they're not, it's not pretty at all.
This is purely a CYA thing.
Yeah.
What CYA is covering?
It's not covered, you're asked. I'm not suggesting what you're doing, or in any way on the board, or incorrect, I just want to be aware of it, period. So, and I don't think it's an unreasonable request, so...
Because I think in that instance, even if, for that one, even if there was a two-sentence email that said, hey, property blah, 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 is doing the foundation work, at least Michael would have said, hey, Eleanor, what did you put for conditions in that? Do you think of steel, and this and that, even if it wasn't about the more, like, that "Hey, property blah 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 is doing the foundation work," at least Michael would have said, "Hey Eleanor, what did you put for conditions in that? Do you think of steel and this and that?" Even if it wasn't about the moratorium, like, that would have been caught. And not that these people wouldn't appeal now.
Don't they have to do that with the building codes anyway? When they were applying for building permits? I mean, that, that falls on the Marcus's steel boiler.
It's, it's not mentioned.
It helps us with regard to neighbors. It's not the building codes, hey, we looked at it.
We thought of the neighbors.
We thought of the neighbors.
And then if there's an issue, it doesn't come back on us, like, we, we told the builder. Like, even if it's in the building code, like, it's just covering up.
I'm also curious, if somebody, if somebody gets the ZA, um, rubber stamp, and then somehow builds over the setback, I assume they have to come back.
Oh, yeah, they come to you at that point. That would not be me. You can't modify something if you're creating a new not performing. The whole decision's based on not increasing existing nonperforming, perhaps making it less nonperforming, or curing it.
So maybe one of the other things we should do is have, find, I'm trying to think of an example, but a decision that has been done with foundation work, where we've included all those conditions about the steel and shoring things up and all of that, and so that you can use that as a template, so you make sure that those conditions that we typically put in are included.
Well, yeah, I might just consult with, on a, with Eleanor.
Yeah, well, I can see, I'd like to get that conversation that Ed gets from the neighbor of not only foundation work, but vibrating.
Yeah, exactly.
Back to your question about the moratorium, if indeed, it should be consistent. I don't necessarily agree with it, but it should be consistent. We impose it every time it comes in here.
I wish all the other boards did the same, because I always get that question, like.
Well, I do too. There's a moratorium in town, right? You can't build. No, unfortunately, that's not the case.
Maybe it's something that should be put in town, but, I don't know.
You all have been imposing it in the CDT and the old Star districts. They're not in R1, not in R10, not in R1.
I bet we've done it in R1 on occasion, you know, on the outskirts.
Depends on where it is, if it's hooked up to a main artery, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we have. So, I would say, yeah, without question, we want to keep it consistent. So, I wouldn't restrict it to just ROH and SOH, and again, there are probably some R1 areas in town that.
Why don't we do this? So if I feel that it's a good idea to impose it, I'll send the decision to you, and I will say, "This one's important, please get back to me about whether or not it would be appropriate to impose construction moratorium."
Well, I think that it's short, if there's any, again, to be consistent, because every one of our decisions.
No, I know, I'm saying when I, when it's not clear to me, if it's sort of on the hospital.
If it's R1, right next to the ROH.
Right, exactly.
Well, Howard Street, Howard Street till recently was R1.
That's my point, you're meaning the other side of Gardner and Lily, if not Lily, but Gardner or Liberty, is R1, and the other, the town side is ROH, so.
And Meter Street was just rezoned R1 from ROH, and so there are plenty of R1 areas that probably would be suited to it.
Okay, so going on to number two, approval for zoning administrator branch request of extensions to ZA decisions should not be executed until you're done with the other week.
Do you have that, do you have that power now?
Not explicitly, I mean, the bylaw just is a very vague description of what I can do, but it really has to do with something that's in the setback, and they're not increasing the setback component.
Well, then, then if that's it, then I think this going over two years has to come back.
Isn't there a provision for a one-year extension within the timeframe? So why don't we keep that?
Excuse me, one, one-year automatic extension?
No, you have to.
Reapply?
I believe you have to request the extension within the life of the.
Yes, that's correct.
But it doesn't come to us.
I think that would be fine.
And that cited, the one that I did is, I cite that MGO and the particular, you know, legal justification. They have to do within.
It's for the one-year extension. If it expires, then they have to come back.
I gave them six months in this case, but.
Did, that, that's a good point. Let's say the, the special permit's expired by a week.
Oh, then they had to come completely.
They have to come back.
Yeah.
So this is only for the one-year extension allowed under the bylaw, within the two years?
Right.
I, I don't want to, I don't think I would.
Ed, you're the guy with all the problems.
I don't have a problem, no problem.
I agree with that one, though.
But that was sent out to the abutters as well, that particular thing, so they had their thirty-day opportunity.
Yeah, I think that one we should get notification as well, because if it was an instance where someone was sitting, like, remembers the application, and there's some unit that we want them to come back to explain why they need to extend.
Oh, no, that, I'm sorry, ZDA would always come to you. This is only for ZA decisions. An extension on a ZDA decision would always come to you.
Oh.
This is for just me, my decisions, my permits. So I just want to make sure that you, because, as I said, it's not explicit in the bylaw, I want to make sure that you're, this is why I'm checking in with you, to make sure you're okay with it.
Wait a second, I thought you were referring to ZDA decision, you voted on something, it has a tier shelf like, correct?
If they want an extension.
With a one-year extension. Can you sign that?
I cannot.
Oh, okay.
You guys have to approve that. That would become, that would come as old business, you would say yea or nay. I would inform file with the town clerk.
So you're talking about.
Your own extension.
Your own.
Keep the same policy, just make things easy.
Yeah.
So you're okay with that?
Did we know?
I still don't like these never-ending extensions, and I think we should take this one on nobody here and tell them how it's saying.
Well, the only pounding of sand would be they'd have to reapply.
At least.
If I'm reading it correctly, Eleanor, correct me if I'm wrong. The only reason they're extending is because the planning board is not able to negotiate. What they're negotiating beyond.
They're negotiating a mitigation, some sort of affordable housing trust fund mitigation, for instance. You know how.
They don't have the money to.
Well, regardless of that, it doesn't really matter what they're doing, that's what they're trying to do, and the planning board is basically asked, if you will, that we let them extend. I mean, if we, if we were to take action on it, Michael, all you're saying is withdraw, they lose their fee, and we'd have to reapply.
Well, okay, then how about we do this? Just re-notice.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Because this is, this is nineteen, this is, when was this thing started?
December, you probably.
December 2014, so I'm hearing nine months later, and I understand the wheels turn slowly, but I just hate these things that continue to go on.
Well, we've discussed this several times, and I, I tend to agree with you on, certainly on the commercial ones, where the, the applicant is then continuing to operate within units. Now, this doesn't appear to be the case.
No, no.
They're not, I assume they can't sell these units, they can't do any, or until, they can sell them, but probably.
They can sell them with the restrictions.
With the restrictions. They're trying to get the restrictions removed.
So those that want to get the restrictions removed, the idea now is, those that want to get the restrictions removed, you own one of those restricted units, you want to sell it without the restriction, you will pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for instance, if that's what they determine to be the best compromise. If you want, you don't have a problem with a restriction, you want to sell it with, you don't pay anything to the Affordable Housing Trust. So that's what they're working out, this sort of the ratio of which units.
Why is it taking so long, I'm curious?
They're probably a hundred percent consent. On the board.
Or on the table.
It's taking long because it's complex.
Michael, if you really don't want to, bringing it, we, let's talk about it right now. Eleanor can let the applicant know that we're gonna vote on it for next month, and they are.
I would, I would want to at least have it re-noticed.
Yeah, the problem is the planning board's after us next month.
I don't care.
So, in other words, it will more than likely be continued for September.
The planning board, the planning board has to come up with one thing that's gonna cover all these, all that government, LA district units. And I don't think they can do it without a vote at a town meeting.
Yeah, editorially, I don't see how they can negotiate something, get rid of your affordable housing covenant.
No way.
Got, you know, to do something you couldn't do at the time, blah, 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 and say, "Hi, I don't, I don't really like it anymore. I'll take ten grand to the housing authority," whatever, it's crazy, but, you know, there, let's move on.
So we need, we don't need to vote on it, if Eleanor is saying.
No, 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 I don't think so.
No, I mean, if you have a particular motion you want to make about it, it hasn't been opened at all, so.
Okay.
Do we need to sign?
No, you need to sign the form.
Can someone make a motion with Jared?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.